I think I can get started since I want to be sensitive to time. But thank you for the opportunity to address you with respect to both the global plan and the depopulation plan that has been presented to the court. I just want to make sure it's okay to move through those instead of separate presentations.
Go ahead.
Essentially, the global plan that had been presented and the department had been meeting with its interdepartmental partners has been set aside because on the sixteenth of last month, we were before in Superior Court of Los Angeles with respect to a depopulation plan that had been presented. In essence, the probation department submitted a plan to reduce the number of young people being held at Los Padreinos in an attempt to reduce the population significantly to a point in which we could regain the Board of State and Committee Corrections approval to run it as a juvenile hall. That plan was accepted by the court. I'm just going to briefly, maybe for the public refresh, what was contained in that proposal. And then additionally, the judge added other requirements for probation. The plan consists of moving some of the young people that are being detained pre-disposition at Los Padreinos to other of the camps that the probation runs. The idea would be to utilize Camp Page for additional youth that are currently being held at Los Padreinos that have been ordered to camp. What has typically happened is that the magistrate would approve a young person being held at Los Padreinos for a camp. They would remain at Los Padreinos during the assessment process, and then at some point, they would be transferred to one of the available camps. Instead, to facilitate the drawdown of population at Los Padreinos, instead of closing Camp Page, Camp Page will be some modifications done to that plan. And then the moment that a judge approves someone for placement, they'll be immediately moved to Camp Page. And from Camp Page, assessments will be conducted, will determine what their needs are, and they can either stay there or go to one of the other two camps. So Camp Page would remain open. It would house the same population as they have been, and they're approved by the SEC to house to date. There's going to be no increase in the total number of approved beds. So this is the most minor of the proposed changes that was accepted by the court. I just want to summarize because I want to make sure people don't get this wrong. We currently have three camps. The three camps will remain open. Instead of closing Page, we will instead use that for an additional couple dozen kids so that they could be moved immediately out of Los Padreinos to prepare for their camp transition there. The other component is the consolidation in one camp of the pre- and post-disposition girls that we have in our system. That would be Camp Kilpatrick. The idea would be to move the young girls at Los Padreinos and Dorothy Kirby to that one site, and then contract for specialized services for their needs. The underlying values of all of this is that we want to make sure that we get the young people in our care to a destination where we can best serve the specific needs that they have. We think that could be done through running smaller communities and by having those communities have specific services for their needs. And they're tremendous. It's more synergistic, and we have additional gains if we're able to do that by housing folks with similar needs. That would then allow for Dorothy Kirby to continue functioning as our high-needs site, and we could move developmentally disabled or those that are going through the process that are currently at Los Padreinos to that site. Essentially consolidating one existing site for the girls, another site for high-risk, high-needs, predisposition youth, continue the use of the three camps for those that are assigned there by the court, and we typically call them campers. And then the last change would be to Nidorf. Nidorf is currently an SYTF, a secure youth treatment facility. It is a very large facility, and without the increasing the population there, we wouldn't be able to drop Los Padreinos by enough to make a significant change and again come into compliance with the state. The idea would be to have different communities within that site. One would continue to be for those that are SYTF. Another would be for young boys that have been recommended and are anticipated to be SYTF but are still in the predisposition phase. They would be in a different part of that facility. And then we want to take great care that there are step-down opportunities on-site so that young people can have agency, and through their own behavior and working the program, they can see right in front of them that they can gain greater liberties in preparation for when they're released on the facility itself. Those, in essence, that's what was presented to the court and accepted. In response, there are some touchpoints. One of them is that we are to report back to the court two weeks ahead of any movement of the young men that we have at Kilpatrick. The idea here that was actually contained in our papers to the court is that I want to be extraordinarily sensitive to the fact that we have young people at Kilpatrick that through positive behavior ended up there, and that the county's necessity to use the site really has nothing to do with anything that they did. And displacing them could create more harm. And so each one of their cases has been reviewed by probation officers, and those recommendations will go to the different departments in the court. And I think that we're close to having a recommendation on almost all of them for them to not have to go back to Nidorf. Another way is not to slip back into a higher custodial environment, but instead we could use a step-down or go home or use, there's some other option. Those decisions are ultimately going to be played out individually with their public defenders and their courts, but the recommendation from probation is that we've taken great care to find alternatives for them when we need to empty Kilpatrick. Another requirement was consultation with respect to our DD population, making sure that when we set up an appropriate environment for them at Dorothy Kirby, that it's in consultation with our public defender partners, and that has already taken place and is underway. Of concern to the court is the utilization of Pine Grove, which is a state fire camp. We currently, that's currently funded for SYTF youth from the county, that if they pass an assessment and they volunteer, they can go to the state to be trained as a wildland firefighters. What the court is requiring us to do is assess all of the predisposition youth in the event that some of them would be eligible should they be SYTF, that that's presented as an alternative to the court as a possibility rather than moving them to Nidorf. Those assessments have taken place. And within forty-five days of the last hearing, which is on the sixteenth, and in writing for a report back to the court on July the eighteenth, we'll have to provide how every young person in our camp has undergone an additional assessment to determine if they should be released early, given capacity issues. That's underway, that hasn't completed. That's a moving target because every single person that's in camp, probation is going through their cases to see if there's a better alternative than continuing them in camp and then taking those cases back to court. Looking at my notes here, well, those are the broad strokes. In order to effectuate these changes, we have an additional requirement because of the distance of Kilpatrick to come up with a plan to present to the court on how we would be able to accommodate transportation or visitation for the families and the networks of those fifty or so young women that would be at Kilpatrick. That's still in progress, and we'll be sure to report to provide this board that report before it goes to court. Maybe I'll stop there. I went relatively quickly, if there are any questions so far.
Can I just, I have a question. On Pine Grove, I've heard that there's been difficulty with the facility. Superintendent's been willing to transfer youth to Pine Grove. What are the numbers right now of youth being transferred to Pine Grove?
We don't have anybody in Pine Grove, so some...
Because I've been told that actually that there is a dislike within probation to refer youth to Pine Grove.
Well, if we have, that should not be the message that my staff is receiving from me. I'm a fan of Pine Grove. I think it's one of the things that the state has done right in continuing to fund even through the closure of DJJ. I know that over the course of the last two months, every single young person in Nidorf has had one or more presentations on Pine Grove, either by Pine Grove staff, a young person that has been a firefighter, we had an actor come down. And so there are a lot of efforts trying to engage youth, including trying to figure out what are the reasons you're not going to Pine Grove? What are the reasons you don't want to?
Why do we have zero?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Why do we have zero that have been referred there? I thought you just said, did I not hear you correctly?
It's voluntary. So this is...
I've heard there are youth that want to go there that are being told by staff they will not refer them there.
If there is a name of a young person that wants to go, please get that to me.
I'll give you two names. I didn't know if there was a policy.
No, 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 no. I've physically been present a week ago.
Okay.
And talked to some young people. I think that, and there's an exit interview with the people that the young men have decided not to go. There's a variety of reasons. Distance, some of them have children, and so we're trying to figure out how to incentivize them.
And I understand that. I guess my concern is that there is a disconnect between the staff at the camp and at the halls and you, and I'm not blaming you at all. I'm just saying that I'm hearing, and it seems that the numbers bear that out, that there is an impediment within Nidorf that does not want to refer youth to Pine Grove. And the number zero kind of reinforces to me, reinforces to me that, and so I think we need, we collectively need to drill down on that, Geronimo, because I see it as an opportunity, and you're right, it is voluntary, and all the more reason to really lift up those youth that want to, because it's not, it's not a walk in the park when you go up there. I mean, it is, which tells you that there's a dedication not only to get an opportunity within fire, but also to turn their lives around. And that really is the end goal and end game.
I hear you. I'm eager to diagnose the reason why. You're right, the largest county does not have a larger pipeline. I will tell you that for folks that are listening to this, that they should hear no uncertain terms, that we should not be dissuading anybody from participating, that is so off the mark that's in my direction. And then lastly, you know, we invite folks to be part of this process with us, ARC or anyone else that may reach these young people, because we do want to find out, what I want to find out. What are the impediments so that we could start? I receive a weekly report. So I receive a weekly report on what the director at Nidorf is doing that week to try to engage the young people to go to.
Thank you. And my last question, and I'll hand it over to Supervisor Hahn. I have a question on the adult, but we'll wait on that. On the youth, is that two-week advance notice and court approval, is that going to have an impact on how you transition, or are you going to be able to work around it? Because I understand why the court's doing it, but it seems that it might cause some issues as it relates to transition.
These are all extraordinarily tight requirements and timeframes. And so the work on the probation site is now complete. It's in the process of being presented to the court. We can't anticipate how quickly they will or will not act on it, but the longer it takes, it could pose a threat to staying in line with the proposal for depopulation.
Okay. And then I'll, we'll stick with the youth now, and then we'll talk about the adult supervision issue later. Supervisor Hahn?
I think she, she meaning her...
Oh, I'm sorry. I just hear your name up there.
We held the item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's okay. No, no, it's fine. I just want to acknowledge, obviously, that we recognize the crisis situation that we're in. I know that the proposal that you've brought to, brought to the court is not one that was approved here at board, so I appreciate you being here to sort of have that conversation so people understand what the plan is, what the expectations are, how you arrived at that plan, and how we move forward to achieve the best outcomes for our youth. We know communication is an issue, and, you know, we want to make sure that both what your plans are and what your actions are are surfaced in a public space. I'm glad to see our other various departments here with you, because it's not just a probation question, it's all of our departments working together to achieve better outcomes for our youth. I want to start with Campus Kilpatrick. This board previously directed probation to phase out OC spray. I know it remains in use in some of our facilities, but this facility in particular has no ability to have decontamination. There are no decontamination stations at Kilpatrick currently, so I want to make sure that, you know, we have the ability to enact a policy that this board has directed by not bringing OC spray into that space, especially because there's no safe way to address OC spray in that facility.
Yeah, I think that this is actually an opportunity to reset on a number of issues. The utilization or the issuance of OC spray was a setback at Los Padreinos, and I understand I did that on my own judgment because of the safety of staff and the young people there. It's certainly not where this county or the department is headed. And in fact, by having smaller groups that really have, it's a way of restarting. So when you start a camp or a facility with half a dozen, a dozen young people, you really work on the services and the culture of the place. It's much easier to get to a place where you don't need OC. OC is really a reaction to something that's already out of hand. And so my hope is that by us being able to do this, we can ensure exactly what you're describing.
Yeah, especially because there are no stations there. It's, not only do we not obviously want it used on our youth, but there's no safe way for our staff to be using it as well.
Yeah, and we wouldn't be approved by the SEC, for example, if we didn't have a way of decontaminate and then utilize it. So that's also within their inspection.
Okay. What is the specific date you plan to begin moving girls and gender expansive youth to Kilpatrick?
To Supervisor Barker's point, so we're now where the information is going to the courts. The speed with which we then receive approval to remove those young men will dictate when we can do that, because it has to be emptied first, so we're waiting on those orders. After it's emptied, there's going to be some minor changes to the facility, and then we can start. So we're still, I don't have a firm date on that because it depends on that first component.
Yeah, I know there will obviously be some significant changes that need to happen. I think a lot of the bathroom facilities, for example, or urinals, because it's kind of boys' facility, and so we need to make sure that all of the facilities there accommodate a new population. But with a population of around fifty girls and gender expansive youth, the goal of this board was really to depopulate that population and make sure that they weren't transferred to a new facility. So what progress will be made since there is time that needs to happen between their, between now and their transfer there with all of the other things that you just described? What are we doing to depopulate that population now?
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. You know, this is really, when we have public hearings, the question that sort of begins and ends everything, which is essentially, why do all of this instead of just releasing these young people? And, you know, my perspective perhaps is a little different as a probation officer for the county, but I'm required to, if the judge orders someone to be detained either during predisposition or after, I have to house them somewhere. And so when we talk about these fifty young girls, my hope is that we're reassessing the cases for any opportunity for them to go elsewhere, but with an acknowledgement that the reality is, the bench is still going to order the predisposition or maybe SYTF detention of young women. And I'm not in a legal position, nor would it be appropriate to simply release them because of these population pressures. I act on behalf of the court on a number of issues. One of them is that when they order the detention of a young person, I have to run the juvenile hall to do that. So there's really no path to have zero detention facility with respect to what the War for Institutions Code says and the expectations of the court. But that doesn't mean that I don't share in the sentiment of, are we really doing everything possible to make sure that we have once, twice, three times taken a look at an individual to see if there's an alternative? In part, that's what the judge ordered. Already part of the calendar is to review cases and make recommendations, but he took great care to say, but I need you to go back and look again and tell me within forty-five days where else you can put these young people.
But since it's only fifty at this point, perhaps you know a number or some number of the existing population that you are actively referring to the court to be depopulated because your recommendation does matter to them. So are there any that you are referring to the court for them to consider to depopulate? I know I'm hearing you say that it's a court decision, but department has a role to play in how you present those cases.
You're absolutely correct. We have not gotten to the step of the girls in particular. It's sort of by order of operations, the fifteen or sixteen that were at Kilpatrick first, because we need to make room there, the campers, because we need to make room to fix some of that. Then by order of the court, all those for Pine Grove, so we're sort of going in order. But for the movement of any of the girls, then that will take, that will take place.
Okay, so you will be recommending cases. Can you let us know when you're recommending those cases so we know they're actually being recommended? Because I think right now what happens is, we ask, there's an expectation, it's up to your department to make those referrals. I hear you saying that the courts have a role to play, but I want to know what role you are playing at our direction to actually get them out of the system and depopulate the jail. And back to the facilities question, I know you had mentioned there will be upgrades, some maybe minor, but another concern that has been raised is, you know, currently, and this is by design, Kilpatrick doesn't have spaces that address when you need to separate somebody out for violence. Right now, everything is open, and the kinds of spaces that are designed for some of, in some of our other facilities are not what is present at Campus Kilpatrick. So for the safety of our youth and for those who are operating the facility, I know we want a home-like setting ultimately. What, how are you preparing staff and how are you training them to work in this facility and this kind of setting in order to address those concerns?
Yeah, let me just be clear. I would not have selected Kilpatrick, but I have to work within the realm of possible and what we have. I would have much rather have designed and built the facilities specifically for the populations precisely for reasons like that. But, you know, reality dictates, of all of the possibilities, this is the closest, and it was designed for a much higher population that we even intend on utilizing. And all of those things are addressed by the SEC regulations. And so the pre-inspection has already taken place and made some recommendations. We consider them to be relatively minor recommendations to bring it into compliance, and we're in the process of doing that. But even after all of that, even after saying, we're going to comply with all the state requirements for all of those things, even after saying it's the newest and best facility we have, and even after making modifications to make it more suitable, there's still going to be challenges for staff because of location, because of the housing units, those are, those are all very real challenges. We, we're going to tackle that in part by trying to go as slowly as possible, because we know that that makes a difference when establishing young people. Two, by engaging as much of their network as we can during this process, because we know there's only so much we can do, and we need partners there that can give us their vision, that they have the ear of the young people. And then lastly, we're going to have to pivot in terms of staff. You know, I really only want staff there that want to be there, that feel compelled to this mission because we are trying to do something different. But in the end, if there's additional training that we need to provide them, we're going to do that. We have a current assessment from a doctor that specializes in these areas that's going to give us some recommendations on, one of them in all likelihood will be staff training, what type of things need to be considered. That's all underway. I concur, we have to be careful and not try to go it alone with respect to this. In terms of the facility itself, I don't think that we're that far away from making it appropriate.
One of the biggest concerns I have in this transition, especially at this location, is being able to provide a full range of services that are unique to the population that will be there. Girls and gender expansive youth have a variety of health needs that are different than the existing population, and so given you are surrounded by some of our other county departments who are critical to providing those services, DMH, DHS, our Office of Education, how are you working together, given the timetable that you have presented, to make sure that all of those services can be appropriately delivered on the timetable that you've identified?
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm trying to look for the PowerPoint presentation. As you know, the chief gave a very big overview.
And if it's better answered by one of the other directors, because they're in charge of that programming, I'm happy to hear from them.
Their theory is that this slide, so our group of decision-makers was established on March twenty-fourth. We've been meeting with the departments, as you see listed here, as well as those that are sitting behind us. We've been engaging in all types of dialogue, trying to resolve any of the challenges that you raise here in terms of services, programming, how to make sure that the youth that are being transitioned from different facilities receive the services and programming that they're entitled to under Title XV.
So do any of the departments here have concerns about the timeline that we're talking about, you think that we can achieve what is expected on this timeline?
And I see you over there, Connie. Mental health is here as well, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Supervisors. Department of Mental Health is in the process of asking for staff to transfer over to Kilpatrick and hiring. We have several being onboarded right now and will be available for that site, so we feel we'll be prepared when the transition of the youth occur.
And for pregnant youth?
Yes.
That wouldn't be you. So our, how will we be serving our pregnant youth there?
This is on, can you hear me? Thanks. We would need to add additional nursing staff to Kilpatrick to be able to provide 24/7 care. Right now, we don't have 24/7 coverage at Kilpatrick, so we would need to add additional staff and onboard those staff. And then that would be able to provide some level of around-the-clock care for individuals, for youth, I know, that are pregnant. There's additional discussions about whether they would need to be held at a separate site versus being able to be held at Kilpatrick, given the potential for complications in that population. But we would need time to be able to onboard the full-time staff needed for the 24/7 operations.
And we think, I hear that you need time. Can you meet this timeline?
I'm not sure what the timeline is, if there's a firm date by which those need to be onboarded by.
Okay. I think, I think that's sort of the general concern. I know that there's an order of operations that needs to be followed, but it's also per the chief, a tight timeline. And so making sure that those things are being stood up quickly and effectively is a concern, at least for me. I would expect for all my colleagues too. I, some of the, I have some, many of the same concerns for Berry J as I do for Kilpatrick. I guess one thing I'm interested in knowing is, given the challenges that we've had with staffing at each of these locations, how will we be... had with, with staffing at each of these locations, how will we be able to address that at both, at both locations, especially because we'll have different populations onsite at Berry J? So there will be certainly a need to have different staff dedicated to address the needs of those separate populations. And I know we've been out of compliance with that before. So how are we going to make sure that we're setting ourselves up for success in that transition?
Oddly enough, what has led us here is a staffing crisis. That's what's been acknowledged by both the S E C and our local courts. And this, this doesn't in its entirety fix that component of it. We still have that problem. You know, the hope is that we see staff have better attendance when they feel more safe, and we know smaller communities function differently. And part of the strategy is hopefully that by having, being a little bit more precise on the programming and on what's happening, that, that assists staff as well in their sense of less chaos and knowing. But the truth of the matter is, this is going to require all of the probation staff in order to do this. This is more population at different sites, and there aren't enough peace officers, which are what we have to utilize for the ratios that are, what are in play here. So in all likelihood, there isn't going to be anyone that's untouched, that's a peace officer in probation. They're going to, in one way or another, have to be part of this. In terms of the, the timeline component, you know, much of the timeline is dictated by a need to quickly drop the population at Los Pedrinos in order to gain re-compliance with the S E C. It's not a timeline that we'd like to set, it's the timeline we have. And so, in talking to the partners, and of course, most of the groups aren't what the department has themselves, and I don't intend many of them, you know, I think that there's been a significant change in understanding, look, these are, we have to provide services for these young people. The timelines that will be dictated to us are the timelines that are dictated to us, and we serve people in all parts of the county, remote and non-remote. So what I hear aren't barriers to essentially say, we're not going to do this, or we can't do this, but they're essentially saying, these are the resources that we need. Nursing is a perfect example. If there's going to be booking that takes place in Malibu, we need a nurse there. And so, it's a question of, in that department, saying, we think we could cover with registry at first, we have a funding issue, can you help us with the funding issue? I'm confident all those things are taking place on a weekly basis, where they're actually working through, look, these are the challenges. And just so everybody's clear, these things have to happen before those services are provided there. So I don't want anyone to think that this has happened before. It's not that we're not thinking about it, we're not talking about it, or the solutions aren't being proposed and looked into. It's just that, we understand how important it is to not give a date and saying it's going to happen by this time. What I can tell you is that our guide is what the judges told us. And we're essentially looking at forty-five day timeframe for the report back, and then sixty, sixty days. And if you go back and look into the plan, it was essentially broken into thirty, sixty, and ninety days when you stretch out the most. So we know that even if we don't know specifically within there, because it goes by order of, as things are resolved by the court, that, those are sort of the, the big venge posts that we, that we know the movement's going to have to take place.
Given also what you've outlined and the staffing challenges that we have faced, I do, I, I would say, you know, making sure that we're using, for example, D Y D to help us with our programming, so that way your staff is focused on security-related needs, and to make sure that we are using other resources to help serve our population, which means they need to be able to access those facilities. I think prioritizing that work is essential. And I would also say, obviously, engaging the staff in understanding that role and responsibility in order for this to be a successful transition is important too. I'll leave it there, because I, for the sake of time, but I just want to make sure that we continue to get updates on this progress, since this is something that you have presented directly to the court. I think it's important for the board to understand what progress is being made in achieving those goals. Thanks.
Understood Supervisor.
Thank you Supervisor Han.
Thank you Madam Chair. So a couple of questions I also have about this, I don't know what we're calling it, or I guess our depopulation plan that we've been ordered to do. Again, just always try to keep that in, in, in my mind too. The only reason this is happening is because we're ordered to do it to try to get in compliant, in compliance with the S E C. So I've been out there a couple of times to Los Pedrinos, and I have noticed just some, oh, there's anxiety among, I think, the staff and some of the, the young people, who aren't quite sure what's happening. I mean, they hear stuff, but they, they're not really sure. What's your plan on communicating both to staff and those who are in our, our custody, what exactly is in their future? And, and maybe when, when you thought you might be able to have that thought?
So I think Chief Deputy Willand is going to, is going to pull up. So part of the plan to the court included what the communication strategy would be for the young people and the families. We did not include the staff. We have a, a separate staff communication plan that includes group meetings, unit meetings.
Has any of that happened yet? I, I'm not seeing the timeline.
You mean for the staff or for?
For both, for the staff, for the families, for the young people.
So Supervisor, we're scheduled to meet with the unions this Thursday, and then after that, we're going to host two town hall meetings with our staff to discuss the depopulation plan.
I mean, honestly, you can imagine, they are, they already kind of have heard stuff. I, I would think it's sooner that you could communicate just as much as you know, because right, there's a lot we don't know, but.
Yeah, I, I understand. There's constant communication that takes place. What I will tell you is that, that this is a completely demoralized staff, in that the constant changes that take place, some of them because of policy decisions that I've made, others because of external bodies make decisions that affect their lives. And so, what they want more than anything else is clarity. But what I have to be careful with is making promises or telling them things that we're going to do that change at the.
I mean, you can communicate it like that, right? You can communicate it like, this might change. But I think it's the uncertainty, and as you know, you know, when there's a vacuum, stuff gets talked about, and probably more misinformation gets spread around. Both, both again, to the young people, I've heard directly from the young people, they don't, they don't know what's happening. They know they're going to be moved, they don't know when, they don't know why.
Yeah. No, I, I understand, but I, I just wanted to make clear, you know, this is communication within a unionized environment. And so, if simply talking to staff, telling them, look, this is what I'm thinking is going to happen, were the end of it, we have to be very careful, have to notice the unions, then the communication takes place with their folks. And, you know, part of it, because there is impact to the members, has to be worked out, because decisions are made on both sides. For example, when we talk about, we, we're going to need more staff at Nidorf. People want to know, is that me? Am I going to have to go there? And simply having a conversation with me, telling them, hey, this is what's coming, I don't think that makes anybody feel any better. They need to know, no, what is the actual plan? How is staff going to be moving around, and how does the union comply to it? So I, I think we're engaged in it.
Can I just add a layer to that Supervisor Han? Guillermo came to the, she, came to our C C J C C meeting and said that, I believe he said the number is close to eighty percent of staff are out of work with comp. Is that percentage, or did I get it wrong? At C C J C C, you said eighty percent?
No, had a work restriction request. Some of those are workers' comp, some of them are.
How does that impact what Supervisor Han is talking about? And what can we as a board do to help mitigate or address that issue? Because that becomes a problem. That, that's a high percentage. I don't think any department, I, I look at my department heads behind you, I don't, could any of you operate with those kind of numbers? Yeah, they're all whining. So just to add.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I understand the sensitive nature of it. I, I just know that they know something's happening. And I, I think it would be in all, all of our best interest to, as soon as possible, you know, just speak the truth as far as we know it, about what we've been asked to do and how, I mean, you do have a plan, right? It's been approved by the judge. So I, I really think, as, as soon as you can, communicating that with the caveat that it could change, just to, to let them know what's in the, in the offering, I think.
Good afternoon. I wanted to speak to the family engagement. This, sorry. Is that better? That better? Okay. For family engagement, we had managers at every single one of our locations this weekend, making sure that they were available to answer questions, passing out flyers, letting them know that we've updated our website. The websites are going to be updated regularly with anything that we can share about the transitions.
Okay, so for the families?
For the families, correct.
When they come to visit.
So, can you give your name just for the record?
Jocelyn Roman, I apologize.
Roman, right? Yes.
Also to your question.
For the families when they come for visitation this weekend, okay. I, I think that's good, because again, it's, it's just at least starting the conversation. They'll have a lot of questions. One of the things I, I know is going to be really important is to renegotiate some contracts. So there's a lot of folks in Los Pedrinos now, who I want to make sure they will be, they're, they will get to follow the young people, right? I think of, one, Hoops for Justice, right? Some of the nonprofits that are in there. Have those contracts begun to be, and do they need to be renegotiated for them to work in Berry J? Or are they contracted with the county, and we can just change the line of where they show up?
Our contracts departments are working with the managers from each one of the facilities, ensuring that the contracts can transfer over to where the youth are. Some may need amendments, so we'll need to work very quickly to make sure that those get done. But we have reached out to the people that provide programming to ensure that they are able to provide the services out of the location.
Because again, they, when I was speaking to them, when I was out there a couple weeks ago, they were also very unsure of what their future was. And they've become obviously very invested in the young people at Los Pedrinos. So as soon as those, that can be done as well, I think that would be helpful. So one of the things I was also thinking, you know, moving this large population to Berry J, you know, let's remember, we were out of compliance at Berry J because of staffing, so we upped and moved that whole population to Los Pedrinos, and we've had problems ever since. So to move them back to Berry J, I'm wondering, would we be out of compliance almost immediately because of staffing? Is that a challenge that you think we can overcome?
It's certainly a challenge, it's certainly a concern. You know, Nidorf has done extraordinarily well, as it had a lower population. We have been able to do exactly what is textbook, which is increase the population there slowly, without slipping back into some of the, the sort of reasons that we were out of.
But this is a big influx of, it's not going to be slowly, is it?
Well, as slowly as possible. So we went all the way down to something like thirty, now we're all the way back up to ninety. And so, if, if this is done correctly, and you do it by small groups at a time, we don't lose our footing. Staffing, staffing is a concern. And I continue to look to the team and to the unions to come up with ideas in which we can strengthen that in a, in a very quick way. But this doesn't happen in a vacuum without the S E C. The S E C still has to approve the utilization of the site. We do have some benefits, that the site is different now, the home-like improvements are complete now. So when we're repopulating, we're repopulating where there have already been some changes made. But I, I don't disagree with you Supervisor, that this is, this is tricky, we need to be very sensitive, and we absolutely cannot slide back to where this was eighteen months ago.
Right, and I think we should continue to double down on our hiring efforts as well. And we had a meeting yesterday with the probation, HR person, as well as Lisa Garrett and her team, and I stressed it pretty hard, that we've really got to continue to do everything we can to hire, because we do get blamed for the hiring freeze, and yet, that has not been an obstacle to hiring, and I think Lisa would say that.
No, and we appreciate your support and understanding that there isn't a single solution, but that being able to continue to offer academies and find different pathways to get folks to come be probation officers, that have different life experiences, different professional training, that might be best suited for what's required of them today is important. We appreciate your support.
Right, and I just want to follow up on what Madam Chair was talking about, which is Pine Grove. And I know one of the directives from the court was specifically to identify youth both at Berry J and Los Pedrinos to be screened for direct placement to Pine Grove. And I heard everything you said, I know it's voluntary, but I just want to back up what Madam Chair was saying that she's heard, and I've heard that too, that it is very difficult, they are being discouraged inside from some probation officers to even volunteer for this program. As, you know, I've been very invested in working with the court to make sure in their transfer hearings, that they can stay in juvenile, because once they're transferred to Men Central Jail, they lose their chance to go to Pine Grove. They have to stay within juvenile. I know, Dr. Galley, I just really want to thank you, because again, this, this whole county family coming together for one youth, who, you know, the D A wanted to send to jail, and was pulling out every trick in the book as it related to asthma. Because Pine Grove currently has a criteria that you cannot have any active asthma within the last two years, right? So if you had childhood asthma, that's one thing, but active, and they were searching through medical records at our, at Los Pedrinos and seeing this one youth actually had used an inhaler, and immediately decided, well, that, that disqualified him from Pine Grove. Again, thanks to our good work of our county health and doctors, found that, that no, that inhaler he had used for a panic attack, and it had nothing to do with asthma. And so, luckily, that young man has finished his transfer hearing, the judge has agreed to keep him in juvenile, and we're trying to get him into Pine Grove. But just to be aware colleagues, C D, C D R C is looking to change the requirements for Pine Grove to prohibit any young person who's ever had asthma from going, oh, oh, C R D, from going to Pine Grove. And as we know, those who are incarcerated are black and brown, and those are also our young people in Lillik County that are most likely to have had childhood asthma, because why? They live near freeways, near the port, near refineries, near oil drilling, so they are growing up in our neighborhoods that are causing them to have. So I'm working, I went up to meet with Isaac Bryan to see if we could work to, to prevent that change from happening, because that would be devastating to our young people, who are the ones incarcerated and who Pine Grove gives that second and third, or first chance to some of these young people. So I, I just want to lean in Guillermo to, to what Supervisor Berger said, and we want to make sure that you are getting the message out, that this is a viable option, if possible, if they meet the criteria, to go to Pine Grove. It is a good program, you support it, I think the D A supports it, he's talked about it publicly. It, it's one of the options that I hope we lean into. And just on that note, I also just wanted to reiterate that I had serious concerns about, you know, probation filing the WIC two oh eight point five motions that would request immediately some of these young people could be sent to Men Central Jail. And one of that, one of those motions happened in this young man's closing arguments of his transfer hearing. How are you, and you told me, you, you spoke, and you said, it is not a part of the depopulation plan for Los Pedrinos to, to move any of these young people to jail. How are you communicating that to your staff?
It's definitely not part of the depopulation plan. It has never been utilized for those purposes, and I think if you just take a look at the numbers of the filings, I think in twenty twenty-five, there were only two. I think there's the evidence. The evidence is that it is not being utilized for those purposes. With respect to Pine Grove. With respect to Pine Grove, I were in agreement with respect to Pine Grove. I'm at the point now, we're putting so much effort at the facility, that I think CDCR owes me a part-time salary. Like, I feel like I'm working for Pine Grove, but I'm at the point where if you know of an employee that is dissuading young people from Pine Grove, I want to know. I want to know directly so that I can intervene, because it is wholly contrary to what we're trying to do as a department.
Well, the numbers don't add up, because I talk to a lot of the young people who want to go. They hear about it, because the presentations have been made, they hear about it, they want to do it, but the members are not supporting it, that we're actually in some way helping them to get there.
That's how I felt. You know, I've now spent enough time on the Pine Grove issue where I'm open to the fact that there may be something else happening here. For example, there may be a competing option for young people, such as onsite jobs that pay $17 an hour. So I don't think that's the full story, but I'm now ready to concede that there might be multiple reasons why. The other one was, look, it requires physical fitness. And so now, one of the supervisors has started a physical fitness program to prepare them so that they're not scared of, because it is going to be rigorous. So I, you know, I keep looking for the one reason, I can't find it, I'm open to it, but we're going to keep tackling it, listening to the young people tell us ultimately why they don't go.
I think the numbers, the numbers.
But if we find an employee that is working against our interests here, I'd like to know who they are.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yes, I'll try not to be repetitive, but thank you to the panel and for your presentation. And I just wanted to ask some questions regarding the transition of youth, especially from Page. I mean, as we start to make that transition, can you go into a little bit more about the numbers and what that looks like, and where those youth are going to be reassigned? Do you have any youth there now at Page?
Good afternoon. So we did the depopulation strategy at Page. We looked at all of our youth to see who could qualify for early release based on their behavior, based on the totality of their program. We were able to release five youth, and the remaining youth were moved over to Athlebal and Rocky.
And how many?
Five.
Total? No, population at Page, I don't know. What's the population?
Zero, Page is closed.
So the five were transferred?
Five were released, and the remaining youth were transferred over to Rocky and to Camp Athlebal.
And what was that number?
The number was six to one camp and five to the other.
So about 11 or so. Okay, and then now your effort will be to reconstruct or change Page again to take students again, youth?
You know, there was maintenance had been deferred because we were going to close it. So now that it's empty, there's construction for a central beam, and I think electrical, a few repairs.
Infrastructure.
Electrical on the roof.
Okay. And when is that going to be completed? Because all this seems to be set up around this schedule that the court is imposing on us, so. And I know that there's always issues with getting construction work done unless it's expedited specifically.
The estimate that we received from ISD is approximately eight weeks for that to be completed.
And how many youth will be reassigned to Page? What are you projecting?
The population that will be going to Page will be youth that are post-disposition to camp and pending placement, so it will depend on what those numbers are at LP. As they are ordered to camp or placement, we will be transferring over. So we're expecting that it should be somewhere around maybe 20 or so that would be populating Page. Don't hold me to that number, but that's what we're estimating.
Okay. And then I wanted to go back on the issue of Camp Kilpatrick, and the fact that I think there was a visit by the POC that visited the camp and came up with some ideas or concerns about the infrastructure there as well. And I think Supervisor Horvath raised some of those issues, but looking at how quickly those will be addressed too. There's issues regarding sewage and kitchen capacity, so what's going to be done there to address that?
And so once again, staff and I are working with ISD to address any type of repairs that are needed at the site, and we can present to the board any type of timeline or estimate for those things to be addressed. But they both are aware of the issues, and we're working to resolve them.
So do you have ISD staff on it right now?
Yes.
Given the timeline? I mean, that's what I want to get at, with the urgency.
So as we mentioned, we've been having the planning work groups, ISD and DPDW are part of those meetings as well. So whenever any type of facility issue.
Michael Lo, you want to answer that? ISD.
Thank you for, excuse me, thank you for the question supervisor, and I just want to say, as you can see, this is a whole-of-county response, and so we are all in on making things happen as quickly as possible. As of right now, for Camp Kilpatrick, there are a lot of scope items that are in discussion, and they haven't been fully scoped out. And so I can't give you an exact timeline, but we're working to make sure that that is as short as possible.
So I guess one of my concerns, and I mean, this is something that is not always in our control, but just making sure that the facilities are available and up to par given what the court has asked us to do. And I think that's the reality that I'd like to get to. Where are we with that? That's of great concern to me, because if you can't move people around, youth and staff and staff, and what does that mean for meeting the expectations of the court?
Yeah, and I just want to make clear, is it seems like every time I do a public presentation, it's either something about my face that doesn't give people sort of good feelings, but I want to make something very clear. These are inspections that we do independently with our county partners, absent POC telling us. There's nothing in that POC recommendation that we hadn't already scoped out, that taken a look at, and were already working on. So for some reason, it seems like, I give the impression that this is the first we've heard of it. Well, in reality, we know what our facilities are, we work with our partners like ISD, and they're, it's always a matter of decisions on prioritization and money. So there are assessments that take place all the time, and then tough decisions are made by county departments on what goes first, because not everything. What has changed is, we have now have a different population that's going, and this is now the priority. So there are things that we may have been aware of that we weren't working on, because they weren't the immediate necessity.
Right, and I understand, I completely understand that. I'm not trying to deny any of that. My concern is that now we are going to have females there.
Yes.
And it isn't just, it isn't just these things that were raised, but it's all the other things that go into making the program work there, which is the programming, the education, the healthcare. And I'm not quite sure if we got an answer about how many pregnant teens we have in our care now. I think the last time we spoke, there were two.
Still two.
Still two. And they are at Los Pedrinos? Or where are they? In the system?
I'd have to say, I think they're both at Los Pedrinos, I'm not sure if one's at Dorothy's.
Okay. So, and it would be good for, I guess at some point, for staff to convey that privately, you know, privately, I guess, to us, the members, at what stage and what their status is. I think that's fair. And I did want to ask just another question, but this is more with the outreach and transportation, because while I think Kilpatrick will be a challenge, getting families and even staff to go there, but more importantly, getting families. But the same issue is with Berry Nordoff, and depending on where you live, will we have a transportation plan available to these sites that we are repopulating? Is that a discussion that we're having at all? And I'm not, I'm not saying that that's a part of what the court order is, but I would think that it's something that we should be mindful of.
I appreciate Supervisor's sense of urgency, and I just wanted to assure you that our partners, especially when it comes to construction, these are, if not everyday conversations that are being had, so they're always very available and working with us, and those assessments take place. It does, we are required to tell the court what that transportation visitations will be within 45 days of the end.
For all of the camp?
Not for all of the locations, but specifically because of the distance of Kilpatrick. I think that whatever we model there, we should consider, if it works well, to consider for all of our sites. As we know, in the larger system, people have difficulty visiting their family members everywhere.
Yeah.
Public transportation is difficult.
You're talking hours, you're talking hours for some, for, I mean, I would, I'm sure in the second district, the first district, people don't have as much mobility, or even a car, and there is no public transportation available.
So I hope that we.
Making all the coordination available in that way.
Yes.
But also, I mean, I see our DYD director, did you want to speak up or something, your hand's going up?
Yes ma'am. Good afternoon, everyone. We have been holding community listening sessions in partnership with probation, public health, mental health, and we've had three of the five supervisory districts so far. The two that are remaining are District Four and District Two, which will be one this week and one next week. Transportation is one of the major themes that has emerged specifically for the predispo girls and gender expansive youth that may require more frequent visits and maybe leaving, you know, in a quicker timeframe. So I know that we're going to do a full report back to all of your board offices with all the notes, as well as the questions that are asked during those sessions, they're really interactive sessions of probation. Probation's definitely been at the table, I think that was kind of a given in each one of those listening sessions. So, but transportation has been something that's been brought up. And there have been some requests or recommendations about how Metro may be able to support in some type of way, especially considering the bus does not go all the way to the facility, it stops, you know, at the bottom of the hill. So we'll be providing a lot more information about that in the next couple of weeks.
Right. And when is your report due? When do you conclude your report, after you meet?
Yeah, we're taking it real time, after every single one of the meetings, actually provided some preliminary notes to some of your offices yesterday.
Okay.
But the last session in South LA is on the 12th, I believe, which, next Thursday, whatever that date is. So shortly after that, we'll consolidate all those notes and get it out.
Okay. And I think just the last thing for me really is more about the programming, making sure that as we make these adjustments, that there's continuity with education, because we realize that out of class really can impede that youngster's ability to complete their GED or to stay the course. And having that continuity, that to me is really, really critical. And we do have students, I know, that are taking classes at community colleges. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I mean, that's great, those are good things to encourage and to continue to support, but I am concerned about the ability of having our, having faculty or staff there. I would like to hear from our superintendent on that, you know, where we are.
Thank you supervisor. So one of the challenges that we're facing, in particular at Kilpatrick, is that because of the flooding that has taken place, we don't have all of the classrooms that we need. So that is a concern that we've shared. Apparently, there are seven classrooms that are needed, and only six are available because one has been flooded, or two have been flooded, so that's an issue in terms of schooling. In terms of staffing, Kilpatrick is the most challenging because of the distance, and some of the things that we're looking into is offering a stipend to our staff and looking into possibly transportation to incentivize staff to go to Kilpatrick. The most critical thing for us is communication, timely communication, so that we can plan accordingly, which has been a little bit of a challenge. If I be more specific, we were just talking about Page, so we weren't given communication about the students transferring out of Page. So those types of lack of communication creates a challenge for us. So in terms of, you know, I guess I'll just end with that. The biggest thing for us is communication so that we can plan accordingly, get in there, set up the classrooms, make sure that technology in the classroom is available, and that we have sufficient notice to plan to make the changes.
All right. And you do have distant learning and all of that, all those other tools available?
Well, we do if we have the technology set up.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, some of, with the movement and changes in classroom, we have to get in there, and we have to make sure that technology is available.
Okay. So you did raise the issue of stipends?
Yeah, we are, Lavo is looking into offering a stipend to staff that are willing to make the change for a three-year period. So for every year that they'll stay at Kilpatrick, we're looking at providing a stipend.
Right. And this may be a little bit off, but I wanted to ask our CEO about this. I know previously, we were encouraging staff to, staff to come into work, and we gave them a bonus. If you recall, we gave probation staff, what was it, at the beginning, we gave them an incentive bonus, so to speak?
Wait, are you saying, are you asking about the incentives that we had to have probation staff?
To show up.
Yes. And what's the question?
Yeah, can you, we go back to that and just kind of, can you kind of tell me why? I know we stopped it, but I wasn't sure why.
Yeah.
And was it impactful? Did it help?
It was time limited. The data that I remember, so two things, the bonus was not time limited, but over time, the numbers, they flattened out. So we received a bump in the number of folks who came to work when we initially started to pay it, but over time, as we went throughout the years, the number, throughout the year, the number of staff who were reporting to work bottomed out. So then the bonus was not effective over time.
So I'm just wondering if that was ever articulated to the union leaders? Because I had heard that there was a question about trying to bring that, not a question, but just an interest in bringing it back, but I don't know how effective it was.
Yeah, what I would say is, that's probably an evergreen request of the union labor for this particular department. Even before we implemented this bonus, that was part of the request, was to pay bonuses, to provide different types of compensation to work different shifts.
Right.
I think at the end of the day, when we finally did it, we received a temporary increase in the level of staffing, but that fell off. And so we have the data, I'm not sure if probation talked to 685, but I know that there was notices about the time period, that the bonuses would be paid, that it was time limited, and I can't speak to if there were communication about how the numbers leveled off after time.
It did not result in hired, as the CEO has said. Had that been a strategy that worked, I would have come back to the board and said, "Look, this is a thing that we need to continue." There are a lot of factors here. Staff are exhausted. At some point, if you've been held over enough, the idea of a compensation 12 months later doesn't work. But even more importantly, you know, if staff know that there is essentially an unlimited amount of overtime that you can work when you want to work, then that sort of works contrary to the idea of the stipend. What I will say is, I don't think that the unions are going to stop asking for it, and so that's going to be a continuous piece. I'm for anything that will help our staff and help us have a more predictable staffing component. I can just tell you that when you just take a look at the data, this didn't do it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you very much. Thanks to my colleagues, for your questions. First of all, I just wanted to say, a number of my colleagues have pressed on the issue of timeline, and we've heard, oh, we're, you know, working on it. But, you know, as I read at least my memo from my team, there are timed certain expectations around depopulation of Los Pedrinos. I assume that was a part of the order from the court, and so there's multiple phases. Phase two to be completed by June 15th, phase three, June 15th, phase four, June 15th. So that's why I think we are feeling a sense of urgency around timeline. A, because we need to take action, B, because the court in BSCC expects that of us. So are we going to, based on hearing the other county departments, not be able to give a specific timeline in terms of some of the actions that are in their wheelhouse? What impact is that going to have on us meeting? What impact is that going to have on us meeting the judge's expectation? And am I, am I interpreting this correctly? We have timelines?
There's definitely timelines. There's timelines that I submitted, there are timelines that were approved by the court, and then the court added timelines. And so, I tried to quietly say at the beginning, the things that we have already completed that were in that timeline.
Right.
So this is already in play. So already in play, many of the requirements by the court, we've completed and submitted, such as the assessment of the 15 or 16 youth, such as the assessment for Pine Grove, the moving out of page, the construction that's already underway. The meetings with the partners continue, so those haven't stopped. And I, if I were to point out what's most at risk in terms of continuing the services, I'm less worried about our county partners, to be quite honest, because they run extraordinarily large operations, and they know how to solve it. What they may need are resources and dates. I'm more concerned about our ability to continue contract services and being able to do that sort of through emergency process.
Okay, all right. D Y D, you talked about the listening sessions, and you're gonna report back to us with a summary. What are people being told who participate in that listening session about what they can expect from having participated and having shared their perspective?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question, and thank you. There are, so when we started, originally this was going to be listening sessions for the global plan, right? And that was before the court order came down. Since the court order came down, we've been explaining, you know, to the folks that have been attending, and those have been CBOs, they've been community members, they've been affected youth, and there have been families, about 70 people have attended so far, and we've got about 70 more registered, 75 more registered for the next two sessions that are upcoming. They're being told that we're going to take everything that they give us, we're doing everything in writing, their questions are all on index cards, and we've collected all the questions. They're in small group settings, after the presentation by probation and a few Q and As. We actually put them in small groups, we've got note takers at each one of the tables, and we're being told that all those notes are going to be consolidated, presented obviously to probation for their consideration, but also presented to this board for recommendations and considerations of requests.
So I would hope, just as we've talked about, communication to the staff, that there could be some kind of circle back process, so once the plan is in place, people know what's happening. That, so they'll have a sense of whether their input, you know, something's stuck, it changed, just so they know. I think sometimes closing that information loop is so important, because I'm invited and I'm asked my opinion, and then I never hear anything else. So at least to close that communication loop, I think, is helpful. Particularly, if I self-select and choose to come to this listening session, I have a vested interest, for whatever reason. Either it's my child, it's a family member, community member, I have a vested interest. So closing that loop, I think, would be helpful. Thank you Supervisor Solis, asking the question about transportation. Glad to hear it will be, I'm not surprised, it's already been elevated in listening sessions. Thank you to my colleagues who've already asked questions about renovations and modification. Question of the chief, what's the process that you're going to use to reassess youth currently held in Los Pedrinos? As well as the timeline for that population, as well as reassessing the, the secure youth treatment facility population?
Specifically for the LP population, we're going back and working with our intake team to see if there was anything that we could have done differently, assessing cases. We do know that we're following the law, 707B offenses, and so we're in compliance. But where possible, is there an opportunity for us to present the case back to court to say, we want to, you know, adjust the recommendation? So we have made those assessments, it's an ongoing basis. We're working with the deputy probation officers to do that. And I think you asked to address about the-
SYTF youths as well.
So for Los Pedrinos, has approximately 30 youth that are SYTF recommended. Last week, I sent over caseworkers from Berry J. Nighthoff to meet with those youth, to do the Pine Grove assessment, talk to them about their qualifications, their interest in Pine Grove. I wanted to interject that a little bit earlier. And also to find out where we are with them, can we start doing some, some positive casework and getting them to prepare for the transition over to Berry J. from LP? Again, where possible, we are assessing cases, they're a little further along over at the SYTF.
I appreciate you following the law and, and the court's interpretation of 707B, but I do also appreciate you taking the opportunity and leadership role in reevaluating and figuring out what within your power and the policy of probation can kind of influence that outcome differently. So I appreciate that. Thank you Supervisor Horvath for raising the issue around depopulation for our girls and gender expansive youth. You know, what became clear to me in a conversation in the past, is, you know, we hear that the number 50, but the reality is, it may not be the same 50 girls or gender expansive youth. And so I appreciate the conversation and the pushback, I think, from Horvath, recognizing the courts play a role, but you play a role too. And so, you know, I'm hoping that the courts and the DA are also hearing the direction and desire of this board around that population, hearing from the public and the advocates about that population, that they, that they aren't continuing to send girls and gender expansive youth to these facilities as quickly as we can try to redirect them. So I appreciate you continuing to keep your foot on that accelerator. And we continue to hear concerns about those in custody. Are there other department heads here, either mental health, or anyone else that wants to talk about the role you're playing in providing support to this population as we try to depopulate them? Dr. Ferrera, thank you.
Well, yeah, thanks a lot. I want to note that we're active members of the planning committee, that's really trying to grapple with making sure that the services are coordinated and that they're accessible. We will be amending our existing contracts for substance use treatment, so that we will be at all of the facilities. We haven't been at all the facilities in the past, but we will be very shortly. And at some of the facilities where there'll be additional young people, we will have additional services and support. So our MOU is almost complete, and it does now allow us to provide an entire range of services at every single site. So, you know, again, I want to thank the chief and his team for working so quickly with us to make sure that we could use this as an opportunity to expand services in general, but particularly to get into all of the sites that are under probation with a set of services as appropriate. So we're, we're expanding by, you know, I think I want to say like 30% the footprint through our, through our contracted providers.
Helpful to know. I appreciate that. Anybody else want to comment on that?
Share that. The credible messengers are going to be counseling and working with the young people that are likely to be affected by the move, and then also be there to support them and receive them when they end up in their new destination, again, the ones that are most likely to be moved. So we kind of have an idea of what populations of young people that those will be. So, to try to calm them, to bring down the tension, bring down the anxiety, obviously in partnership with, with other partners at the table.
And you were talking about all the youth that will be impacted by moves, not just girls and gender expansive youth.
I'm sorry, yeah, that would be all, both.
Perfect, perfect. I appreciate that. I think that really kind of leads me directly into my next question, and this is, I got this one and one more, Madam Chair. You know, I've certainly received feedbacks from the probation oversight commission and other advocacy groups, that the redistribution of youth across facilities won't solve for our current staffing issues. And I heard loud and clear, 80% are impacted by some order that they can't do the job that we need for them to do. I heard you. So can you explain how, not just you, Chief, but all the departments are planning to ensure that the plan not only addresses staffing concerns, but also avoids placing additional strain on other facilities and strain on our young people?
Thank you Supervisor Mitchell. You know, one of my greatest disappointments during this process has been my inability to get people past the, let's not do this, and, and we don't have time for that anymore. I'll give you an example. If I, if I get one more report or insight that transportation will be difficult at Kilpatrick, my response is, please jump in. We need you. You're right, you've been heard, I now need you to be part of the solution. I'm with you. What can you or your organization do to make sure that continues to happen? My hope was that part of this plan would allow us space to do things differently. I'm not just trying to replicate what we had at Los Pedrinos, divvy it up and take it somewhere else. If you go back and you take a look at the plan, there is a reason why it was chosen to separate by needs of the young people and try to have smaller communities. That's meaningful. And what I would love to have the CBOs and our partners jump in on, let me use this as an opportunity. I have lots of opinions on how what you've been doing at LP is wrong. Let me take this opportunity to help advise and come up with suggestions on how we do that differently in the new location, and we don't replicate the mistakes. That includes the union. I want to hear about the stressors of the staff that is causing them to either be unable or unwilling to do the work. What can we do differently for you as well? Because we need healthy staff to have healthy young people. They are the models of the young people, and so they need to be healthy too.
And I agree with you, and I would hope during the town hall meetings, when Supervisor Han asks you about, you know, how staff being told about the changes, I am hoping that they not just show up to listen and/or critique and criticize, but to be full partners in providing feedback at these upcoming briefing sessions with staff. It is my hope that they too will talk about, as you just said, bring solutions about what can make it successful, acknowledging that it has been court ordered. My mother used to say, the difference between what is versus what ought to be. We are now living in the land of what is, thanks to the court, and hoping that they would come to the town hall, not just to hear from you and understand the changes, but also, as I meet many in your department in my district, who was great pride telling me their tenure of service. And so to bring that 35-year experience and perspective, to talk about what we can do collectively to make this transition best for the youth in their care and for them as employees of the department.
Thank you, and I hope you don't mind if I start using the what is versus what ought to be.
Oh, my mother would love, she'd be loaded by, as a former chief probation officer, she would have loved that she were.
Well, I certainly will, and, and look, I'm not giving up, because in part, folks are welcome to criticize me or the department, in part as atonement for things that have happened to young people and people that are just as involved. I get that, I accept that, that is part of the job. But that does not mean that we don't need you as partners to come up with the solutions. I hope that folks don't think that it's one or the other. In other words, you could still be for decarceration, and in today's problem, partner with probation to do something that's better for the young people. And I hope, and I continue to extend an offer to folks, I'm willing to listen to the criticism that you got to end with, some solutions that are something beyond simply saying, well, then no one's incarcerated. I need things that are going to improve, and you don't have to give that up, and we can continue that discussion. But we have before us a 45-day turnaround in being able to do something better for the young people.
Forty-five day turnaround, and the clock started, when?
The 16th of last month.
The 16th of May?
Yes.
Right. So again, just as I've said to, I hope probation staff will come to those meetings and bring solutions, I hope, solutions. I hope that you too will give them space in those meetings, that to, to come to the table with solutions and ideas on how to be successful with the remaining time, as limited as it is that we have left. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And then, just to follow up, Gemma, on the, and Supervisor Solis brought it up regarding page, I want to thank you and your team for meeting with Laverne to explain, I mean, I think one of the lessons learned for me is that less information, I understand why we do less, but sometimes that creates misinformation in the community. And Supervisor Solis and I both share Laverne, and misinformation spreads like wildfire. So I appreciate you and your team getting out ahead on that, to explain exactly the population that's already there, and, you know, what we are doing on that. And then, to follow up on the question regarding staffing, I'm still concerned, and even with the accommodations needed and workman's comp, so it's both workman's comp and our accommodations, I think we do need to have discussion, and I know we've had it this far before, on what we are going to do, because 80% is not sustainable. And as a taxpayer, I don't, it doesn't make me feel good to know that we have staff that's, that's not coming to work, that's getting paid. And I don't think it, I don't think it helps the people that are working to know that there are those that are out, that are still getting paycheck, and they're coming to work, and they're being held over, and they have no control. So I would, not for an answer today, but I think, I know, I don't think, I know, we have to address this issue and nip it in the bud once and for all, because it's going to get worse before it's going to get better. And then last but not least, David, thank you for the listening sessions, I know in Animal Valley, Lancaster, you had a good, good one with valuable feedback, so I'm excited to see what we're going to do. I know that you talked about the transportation, that continues to be an issue, and I think we need to provide a clear thoughts and what we are going to do to help accommodate that, to stay connected, because I know that's part of rehabilitation, is to have the family be a component in that. So I look forward to where we go from here. So thank you, and thank you to the entire county team behind you. Thank you.
Supervisor, can I say if you demand?
Okay.
That D H R's been working with probation on four different fronts, and one is recruitment and hiring, bringing more people into the department. Since we started this exercise, our goal was 150 a little while back. We're now at almost 300, 299 employees that we have hired into the probation department for, as group supervisor NICE and also DSOs. In addition to that, D H R is working with their disability management and long-term leave individuals. We have actually taken over that, taken over that program, and we have staff stationed at Los Pedrinos to assist them in working through these cases with the goal of returning individuals to work, seeing if accommodations are required, and how we can make certain that folks are actually working based upon what they can actually do based upon medical certifications. We have also obtained third-party administrators, subject matter experts in the field of long-term leaves and disability management. We signed that contract, or the chief signed the contract on April 1st, and this, these individuals, Cedric, will take over the administration of the voluminous amounts of paperwork that are required for this, so that this will free the staff up to work the cases. And so we're building that system out even now. An additional front, we're working on performance management, where if individuals are not coming into work, they should be getting some notices, like, when are you, why aren't you here? And so we've deployed our performance management team to probation to start issuing notices to staff who are not coming in. These are not the people who are, have doctor's notes, but these are people who are just not coming to work. And as a result of that, we have actually helped them pin 600, I'm going to say, notices, at least 200 or 300 of those notices have been issued to the employees. And it has, we have seen a reduction in the callouts for the department. So these four fronts are what we are working with probation on.
Thank you. I don't know whether I should feel good or bad, I don't know if I'd want people like that watching over my child, but, okay. I think that they're completely having disdain for coming to work and have no doctor's note or something. I think that's a problem in and of itself, you know, I mean, I think, I don't think you disagree with that, but I question their integrity as it relates to work. But let's just get them back, and then we'll discuss that.
Some time ago, before Gemma took over, D H R actually did a department-
Some time ago, before Guillermo took over, DHR actually did a department-wide survey for the staff, and we got some very good information back. Some of the staff were concerned about their safety, some of the staff were concerned about being held over, there are a number of things. So I would probably suggest in this instance, before we start the listening sessions, and we can help you with this, send the survey out, and then the listening session can further drill down on the concerns of the staff so that we can address those.
All right. Thank you. Hearing, seeing, no other questions. Executive Officer, please call those members of the public that wish to, that talk on this item.
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you. Adam Summer, Claudia Jerez, Crystal Chavez, De Maria Player, Deanna Pittman, Davantray Farmer, Emari Wallace, Floyd Hardy, Helen Edenberg, Jacob Jackson, Jazara Holiday, Jeffrey Heinz, George Garcia, Judith Pop, Natalie Segura, Raquel Derfler, Tadiya Shakur, and Thomas Bell. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address items seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two, if you have not already done so, please press one then zero now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, can we have the first speaker, please?
Roy Humphries, your line is open. You may begin.
Okay, folks, after listening to this, it's an oh-my-God moment. Here, if I wasn't prone to drinking now or doing drugs, I would be after listening to you people. How many years have you been under the judicial system for compelling this situation? It's a damn shame. And have you gone out to the colleges and universities to get people into the jobs? And how about the military persons getting out? This is pathetic. And the other thing is, the gentleman said, where's the money? You need a huge infusion of billions of dollars to get this system under wraps. And how about going to the Chinese, the Japanese, and the South Koreans, if you want to learn how to run confinement facilities and take care of the whole business? This is just a damn shame. And you deserve what you get. If we don't deserve it, this is pathetic.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And Madam Chair, we have no other remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Thank you. We will now go to in-person speakers. Please begin.
So I'm Adam Summer with Juvenile Giants. I do programming at Los Pedrinos, and I don't have a lot of time, so I'm gonna do this quick. First of all, I want to commend deputies like Janice Huns, Kylie Coats. DYD's been extremely helpful in getting my program moving extremely fast, and there's a dearth of programming. Since I only have forty seconds, here's what I would say. I think if there's policies changes that every single person who I've talked to working within probation agrees with, is that we basically have a gang atmosphere within each unit. It's like a gang buffet. You have no exposure to these gangs, and all of a sudden, all your ops are in one unit. So if there's a fight, and you can't put them down for twenty-four hours, and you have young boys, young men, who are excited and have adrenaline coming back into their system, and then they fight again. So I think it needs to be, once again, twenty-four hours for your first fight, forty-eight hours for your second fight. And this was shown to have improved a lot, I think, with disciplinary issues before, and I think it will again.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Crystal, with Cancel the Contract. Earlier this year, three teams at Los Pedrinos juvenile hall were hospitalized after suspected overdoses, that in the latest string of alarming incidents. The county is getting ready to pay out two point six seven million in settlement money for a teen assaulted in a gladiator fight at Los Pedrinos. This problem cannot be solved just by shuffling the youth around from camp to camp. There needs to be accountability of the staff to make sure the same issues do not occur. We were at that DYD meeting, and we were advised that there are so many eyes and oversight at the camps, yet all these incidents still occurred, which leads to believe that the work culture is so ingrained that it's causing the bystander effect, or nobody wanted to say anything because they were too afraid. Maybe they need a different type of training. We should not keep repeating the same costly patterns. The system is clearly broken and needs to be analyzed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon. Helen Eichenberg. I live in SD Three. It's just so hard to have confidence, sitting here listening to all this today. I have to be really honest. We are now six months still in compliance, non-compliance, and not meeting the standards. And now we're in this mad dash to move these youth around and cause nothing but harm. You know, I still do the math. If we have two hundred and seventy youth, and we don't have enough staffing, and just because we move them to other facilities, we still don't have enough staff, and I don't understand it. I'm not a mathematician, but the math does not add up. I also want to thank DYD for the community meetings they've been having, but I want to tell you, probation, your answers have not been good at three of them. So you have two more times to get it right, and give answers that are appropriate and up to standards to the folks that are there from the community. I wish you had done better on your reassessments before the POC meeting back at last month, when you only found two compliant, because now there's a mad dash. We don't know what the process is for your reassessment.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Raquel Derfler with Cancel the Contract. This board has unfortunately consistently trusted the chief's judgment in addressing issues that have occurred on his watch. It's not about atonement from him. It's about him being responsible for his department. You are actually relying on the fox to watch the hen house. The failings of the probation department are direct result of the cultural behavior that's allowed. It has nothing to do with training, lack of training. If they are not held accountable, they're gonna continue to engage in harmful behavior. My Supervisor Bartra, I'd like to let you know that the meeting wasn't great out in Lancaster. I was there, and the representative from the probation department actually said to us that Malibu was better than Lancaster to a roomful of people. So issue with that is that the court had already ordered the moving plan, so it wasn't really a place for us to be able to give suggestions on, you know, what could be different and helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jacob Jackson. I'm with the Youth Justice Coalition. I'm speaking today in strong opposition to the probation department global plan. We've been advocating both here and at the probation oversight commission because the current system continues to fail our youth. Just recently, you passed a motion to reevaluate all young people in LA County juvenile facilities, because many of them shouldn't be there in the first place. Some of these young people have not even been given a second chance or a proper assessment to determine whether they should be released. Yes, young people must take accountabilities for their action, but accountability should not mean endless punishment. It should mean an opportunity for growth, healing, and redemption. The plan to move youth from one rundown abusive facility to another is not a solution. It's simply repackaging the same failed system of warehousing and neglect. With four billion available in the settlement fund and a long documented history of abuse, it is unconscionable that the county continues to invest in incarceration rather than healing, housing, and real community-based alternatives. I'm not gonna lie.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Floyd from YJC. Good afternoon. I'm here to share my thoughts on the global plan. I've been in Los Pedrinos and barely had any visits from LP because our facility is very far. Now you're trying to move the youth to even farther, to Malibu. When our locked-up probation officers were starting riots, abandoning youth, seeing many people locked up when I was being, when I was locked up, I seen people being abused, and even together, and y'all trying to put together a plan to move them when y'all still have a settlement for four-point-billion-dollar lawsuit, and that our taxpayers, that our taxpayers have to pay. Rooting harm, we should never be locked up our youth for our safety. And this system is very reasons why people are, people need to be protected. Being with, I'm strongly opposed to probation global plan. Do what's right for our youth.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is George Garcia, and I am with YJC. And today I want to address a critical issue concerning the well-being of our youth and the environment they are kept in. These facilities are not good, and treat our youth bad within gladiator fights or just having a fight on their own most of the time. Overseeing our youth, particularly in the probation system, when they themselves are implicated in the very issues, they are meant to address the integrity of our probation system. And the question, there are allegations of harm against young people. Instead of fostering trust and safety, such claims can create an environmental, environment of fear and skepticism, further complicating the lives of those we aim to protect. Second, we must acknowledge that many children within our systems are there not because they belong, but because of the circumstances beyond their control. They are often victims of systemic failure, facing challenges that require understanding, compassion, and support, rather than punishment or exclusion.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Natalie Segura. I'm with the Youth Justice Coalition. I'm a free LA high student and a level fellow. I'm here today to urge you to reject the global plan. Youth in LA County probation facilities face ongoing abuse and neglect. We demand immediate decarceration and accountability. LA spends four point four billion on LAPD. That money should go to building affordable housing, youth programs, and community services. Our youth needs guidance, not to be put away in cages. The Youth Justice Coalition has helped with these youth people to get their education and finish school, as well with different job opportunities and trainings that have helped to keep these young people out of trouble. Do right, invest in our youth, and free our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Emari Wallace. I'm with the Youth Justice Coalition. I am here today to express my strong opposition to the probation department global plan. My family has been directly impacted by the system. I have personally experienced the pain of being disconnected from my loved ones, because this is, because they're constantly moving. There is no stability when families are broken apart like this. Some of my family members were forced to move out of state due to incarceration. I haven't been able to see them in years, even, not even once, in over two years. As a student, I'm doing my best to focus on school, but it's painful to know that my loved ones are far away, and I have no way to visit them. Right now, the probation department controls inhumane facilities where the environment and staff are not suited to support young people. Every juvenile hall in LA County...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Davantray Farmer with the Youth Justice Coalition. I demand a no to the probation global plan. It is unacceptable that some probation officers, these individuals who are supposed to guide, support, and rehabilitate the youth, are instead abusing their power and to harm our youth. Probation is meant to offer second chances, not serve as a pipeline to further trauma and incarceration. When children are locked up, beaten, or sexually harassed by the very people who are in charge with protecting them, it's not just a failure of one individual, it's a systematic failure. Lawsuits even be, lawsuits are being brought up to attention, but it's not, it's not being handled for the kids. They still have to suffer through that trauma. We need more than legal settlements. We need accountability. We need oversight. We need real reform. Our youth deserve justice, safety, and dignity. Not more harm from a broken system that claims to...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeffrey Heinz with the Youth Justice Coalition. I have been working in the field of youth development for eight to ten years now. I am opposed to the global plan. Moving youth further away from their families doesn't, doesn't help the situation. There are kids in there that should already be let out, but they're still sitting in there. There's other issues that probation could be, be working on right now than thinking about trying to move them. This place has been out of compliance since I started working at Youth Justice Coalition. I've been coming up here talking about the same buildings, the same issues. These kids need resources. They need, they need mental health resources. They need things that can make them rehabilitated and not harmed even further. The lawsuit proves that there's things that's been going on in LA County that we've known about since I was a kid, and finally is coming to light. How much more stuff needs to come to light?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Judith Pop. I'm the street cred coordinator at Youth Justice Coalition. I'm here to start funding probation. Despite the language of rehabilitation, probation often acts as an extension of policing as a reliance, not as a supportive service for our youth. At YJC, we support young people and their families, parents, grandparents, and entire communities deeply impacted by substances and systematic harm. Through education and care, program offers healing and dignity. Reports of naloxone is highly effective at reversing overdose. Survival rates are reported to be around ninety-three to ninety-nine percent when administered. When you invest in youth programs like ours, you're investing in life, saving, support. You're building futures, not cages. Redirecting funds for probation to community programs save lives and strengthen our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jazara Holiday, and I disagree with the global plan. Moving youth has been disastrous in the past and traumatizing to our youth. We have already seen this tactic fail. Any positive education programming, essential mental health services, and related medication delivery could severely dysregulate young people receiving treatment. This move will force youth to cope with all new facilities, staff, and youth interactions, providers, schedules, and et cetera, all of which, on the contrary to most... Fix my mic. What's going on? Take the four million and invest into saving lives, not covering up sexual abuse that you guys have piled on top of these kids' trauma already. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Charis Shakur, and I'm with Youth Justice Coalition. I'm here today to make it clear, any plan put forth by probation is a plan that will continue to fail our young people. I urge you to reject the global plan. It has been just over two years since Brian Diaz lost his life inside the halls, the very system presenting this plan to you today. We cannot keep pouring resources into a system that has proven time and time again it cannot keep our youth safe. Do the right thing. Invest in youth development, not incarceration. Invest in the youth development empowerment strategy. Invest in yes teams, not more failed probation proposals. As Brian Stevenson reminds us, each of us is more than the worst thing we've ever done. It's time we treat our young people that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Board. Again, my name is Claudia Jerez. I'm a Downtown Women's Center case manager, and I'm also a former DPSF employee for about ten years. I have heard the youth. I've heard Officer Guillermo. I've heard Ms. Mitchell. You're on here. I don't see you. I've heard Ms. Ildefeliz. Now, I have to tell you, there's a global, I believe it's called a global plan for our youth to have access to these facilities. I have to tell you, I am very, very involved with the community. I worked with Downtown Women's Center. I worked with DPSF. I understand civic duties in this city. I understand Los Angeles County is...
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other speakers who have signed up to speak on these items.
Thank you. Executive Officer, this is a receive and file, hearing no objections on seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two, which is what we're gonna be receiving and filed. Correct?
That is correct.
So it's, these reports will then be received and filed, hearing no objections. That will be the order. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you. I put my hand up, and then it was removed. I just wanted to clarify, because we heard a lot from many of those who came up and spoke. I'm sorry they left. What was presented today was the plan that is now our, been court ordered. We've had conversations about the quote "global plan," but I just want to make sure everybody is clear that the judge has now ordered this plan, and that's what we were discussing here today. I'm sorry they left, because I thought it's important for everybody to be on the same page. Today's the...